Good afternoon. I would like to welcome all of you to our board meeting tonight. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below on Zoom. Or at the John, you can go to the corner of the room to get materials. Para acceder a traducción, aparece en el botón del globo en Zoom. Cuando John puede ir a la esquina de gimnasio. We are returning from our closed session. And for our opening procedures, the public will have opportunity to make public comment. The board recently voted to change the public comment format. We have opportunities on non-agenda items in person through Zoom app and by telephone at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last one hour. The the time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board forum to indicate your desire to speak to an agenda on an agenda item. After it's been turned into staff, they are placed in order of when they are turned in. We also call on speakers one at a time and switch between public comment at the John and one on Zoom. If participating be assumed, you will need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. Now yielding of time or substitution of speakers are permitted. The public will also have opportunity to make public comment on agenda items after the staff presentations for each discussion and action items. The public will have 10 minutes per item and one minute per speaker. Due to the Brown Act, the board member board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now let's move to our opening procedures. First, we have our pledge of allegiance. Everybody, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now for our land acknowledgement. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chichen Yumwekma Karkin Aloni peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. Dr. Hurst, could you please take roll call?
Absolutely. President Gonzalez Hoi.
Good afternoon, President.
Trustee Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone present.
Trustee Reckler.
Good evening to everyone. I'm present.
Trustee Christian.
Good evening, President.
Trustee Phillips.
Present.
All present. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Dr. Hurst, do we have anything to report out from closed session?
Absolutely. The board voted to approve student number one special education settlement agreement. The vote was as follows. President Gonzalez Hoi, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Smith Folds, yes. Trustee Christian, yes. Trustee Phillips, absent. Additionally, the vote, the board voted to approve Tipewa McGee as the next principal for Kennedy High School. President Gonzalez Hoi, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Smith Folds, yes. Trustee Christian, yes. Trustee Phillips, absent. Board voted to approve Malcolm Norrington as the principal of El Cerrito High School. President Gonzalez Hoi, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Smith Folds, yes. Trustee Christian, yes. Trustee Phillips, absent. The board voted to approve Amar Nalik as the next principal of Verdi K eight. President Gonzalez Hoi, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Smith Folds, yes. Trustee Christian, yes. Trustee Phillips, absent. The board voted to approve Bart Bowers as the next principal of Pino Middle School. President Gonzalez Hoi, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Smith Folds, yes. Trustee Christian, yes. Trustee Phillips, absent. The board voted to approve Cynthia Breedlove as the next principal of Coronado Elementary. President Gonzalez Hoi, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Smith Folds, yes. Trustee Christian, yes. And Trustee Phillips, absent. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Now we're going to move to public comment. Ms. Menos, do we have public comment? And could you please put up the clock on the screen?
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is Maya Bastianat. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me okay? All right. Thank you so much. I really just wanted to let you know that it would be very helpful when you are sending communications about things that are happening in the board meetings, if you could include a link to the board meeting. There's nothing on the board meeting on the board website about meeting schedule. I just feel like it's a little like a barrier to participation. It took me about a half an hour to figure out how to connect to the meeting today. So I just wanted to put that out there. It would be very helpful. I think people want to participate, but it is sometimes difficult to find out how. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Salon Harrison. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Gordon. Good to hear you guys. I'm coming in in a little while. But I just wanted to request a special meeting for, can you guys hear me? Can you guys hear me? Okay. I would like to request a special, not a special meeting, just the another board meeting separately to talk about the equity audit to ensure that it's happening and how it's going to be implied this coming school year. We spent a lot of money and resources to get that out and I think it was really good. But I would like to hear how the board plans to start implementing that and holding district staff accountable to implementing that and also looking at us checking in regularly to ensure that it's being implemented, whatever steps we are choosing to take to move the audit forward and what the findings were that we need to move forward. I would like to request that the board schedule a special meeting to go through the audit and see what are we, what's the roadmap that we can start implementing? Some of the things that were recommended and some of the things that would cause black children to have better educational outcomes. So I'm complete. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Happy August. We're back. First, I'd like to say had a great time in summer school with my students. We had a great time at DeAnza with the ESN students. It's always a pleasure and a joy and it's a grounding for me. Also, Kennedy High School's appointment of a principal. In a way, I kind of like, I don't know how to feel because part of me feels like, were we really part of the process? It's great that we do have, you know, a principal, but were we, I know it's summertime, but could anybody reach out to us to be part of the process? I also want to thank openly Mr. Orozco and Mr. Ardeus McDonald for, you know, stepping in for us in this interim period of time for leadership. And I'm thankful that, you know, Ms. Jordan Swan is still with us as well. And she's been working really hard on our master's schedule. But yeah, I'm just kind of to get an email at like 3:30 today to, hey, tune into the board meeting and find out about your next principal. I kind of sort of don't know how to feel about that. But those of you who know me know that I'm going to support my principal because it's all about, you know, us being a community and a family. I look forward to meeting whomever this individual is. And I can only speak for me and just how am I going to be feeling walking in whenever, you know, coming in this school year knowing like, I just kind of felt like I wasn't part of the process. And as you guys know, Kennedy is a challenging place to be. But like I said, I'm a trooper. I'm a team player and I'm going to support whoever our leadership is. So it's great to see all of you and look forward to a great 2023, 2024 school year.
Our next public comment is Andrew Wilkie. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
I'm just calling in tonight to advocate for the agenda item you have to approve marching band as a PE credit. Our marching band students, they've already started their school year and we're doing five-hour rehearsals a day, prepping for a long competition season and parade season in which our students are not only learning how to physically manipulate their body and time and space, but do that whilst playing music in a very large ensemble that covers a large amount of space, which adds to all the complexity. Let's see, in 32 states, marching band is now recognized as a physical education credit. A lot of the schools we go and compete against in our competitions, these students, I know their teachers, all of our music teachers in the state have organizations where we know each other and most of those serious marching programs are getting PE credit. So it's a very physical activity. If there's question of that, I mean, when we do our three-hour, three-mile Chinese New Year parade, I'm happy to give one of you guys a bass drum and have you march three miles with it. It's a, I don't know how the kids do it, honestly. So there's that. The other benefit of having it count for PE is most of our music students are students who are taking AP classes and other singularities. So getting PE credit accounted for outside of the day would be very helpful for those students to continue to thrive and succeed. Also, our PE classes, as I presume you know, get packed up, you know, 50, 60 kids in a class. And our PE teachers, God love them, are out there trying to manage that many human beings at once. So a lot of benefits. It's something that happens all over the country throughout our state already. It used to happen in this district also when I was in high school. So yeah, thank you guys so much. And I hope you vote to count to marching band and other athletic courses as PE credit. Have a good night.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. Thank you so much for all the callers. Now we're going to move to our next item, which we have a request to address the board by the West County Council of Elders who are here. And the council of elders is going to get 10 minutes. Ms. Smith, you don't have a presentation, right? Or sorry, there's no presentation attached, right? That we have to put on the screen?
Yeah.
No? Okay, wonderful. So whenever you're ready, we'll start the timer.
You guys ready?
Yeah.
We have to do a little rearranging here. Good evening to all of you, board members, Superintendent Hurst, and Board President. We thank you for giving us the time. I just want to briefly share with you that we are indeed the Council of Elders. There are a few more of us. Of course, we weren't all needed for this evening. But let me start introducing to you, in case you don't know, we have Scotty Smith, we have Doris Holland, we have Gloria Skagans, sorry, and Antoinette Henry Evans. And we were concerned about an article that was written in the USA. And we're here tonight to share our concerns with you and ask you some questions, and hopefully, hopefully, we can get some answers. And remember, this is all for the benefit, as far as we're concerned, for our children in our school district. And with that, our first person will be Scotty Smith. Told you we had to rearrange.
Many educators say they have no idea how to manage the rise in classroom management after the pandemic. Some schools spent COVID relief money on school psychologists, counselors, mental health services, resulting in piecemeal implementation of strategies that is not addressing the needs of our students and parents. And that's because there is a lack of communication communicating data results in a timely manner to the students and their parents. Visualize with me for a moment, you're a child who grows frustrated in school because you cannot read. Those around you continue to succeed. And no level of extra effort is getting you anywhere. Many call you lazy and stupid and place the onus on you for your inability to read and keep up. With no remediation and feeling helpless, what incentive does a student or a parent have to continue in a system that's neither helping and quite honestly, could be creating daily anxiety for students and their emotional stress for their parents? Continuing to throw money to address COEs, the Community Council of Elders, ongoing concerns without a comprehensive implementation plan has proven to be ineffective in addressing the needs of black students. This year's budget includes considerable investments in K-12 schools. Among the allocations is an update in the Local Control Funding Formula Equity Multiplier, which could reach more black students. We are seeking equity, credential teachers, and funding accountability. Board members, develop confidence. Develop confidence in your own power and reliance on your own resources. If you believe we can, we will. If you believe we can't, we will fail. And a whole generation of children will continue on the trajectory of failure.
Thank you, Laurie.
Good evening. The USA Today article illuminated the dismal state of academic achievement, equity, school climate and safety, teacher retention, the lack of positive behavior interventions, and a comprehensive plan for all departments and staff that should be supporting teachers and students and the WCCUSD. If the district wishes to improve achievement, engage parents, and retain quality teachers, it must develop a comprehensive action plan that has goals, timelines, and designated persons to supervise the implementation of its goals. It was appalling to read that search and equated discipline of sending students to a sit in a closet or to another classroom was happening now without the principal and the staff knowing and accessing proper interventions to support students and trained teachers. The district has spent millions of dollars on consultants and administrators that have little impact or correlation between a developed plan that has the district's overarching goals and practices that are happening or should be happening in the classroom. Information about students that are not in class and where they sit or other private information should not be shown in a news article unless the parent's permission has been given and the article should have been sent to all parents and staff at the sites. The district has had necessary department staff, executive directors, curriculums, school safety, climate, communication, parent and community engagement scouts, and a host of other workers. But the missing link are annual measurable outcomes for all of these people and how their work has supported the students and teachers. We should not have to read or hear the blaming of the victim analysis on students and teachers. The failure, our leadership, the failures are leadership because all parts are not working toward the same goals for all students. To paraphrase one of the district's high-paid consultant firms finding, "The district is working in silos," which means to me, one hand does not know what the other is doing. And this can only lead to student failures and equated discipline, procedures, and poor teacher training. Therefore, COE would like an investigation on the reporter's school visit timeline, district procedures, and the persons knowledgeable about the news story to be brought back to the board and public in thirty days. Furthermore, we would like to know the notification process on identifying students in class or if absent, as well as the notification process to parents on press coverage of their child. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Scotty. The news article, our article illuminated specific structural and systematic problems in our district that manifested in our classrooms, and we are seeking specific information that can help us as a district address some of these critical issues. In the past three years, how many teachers were hired at the start of the school year? How many of the newly hired were fully credentialed? How many of the fully, the newly hired were working to complete their credentials through a university program? How many of the newly hired were not affiliating with any university program and not credentialed? We have a concern regarding the amount of coaching and support for new teachers, especially those who are uncredentialed and making the cultural adjustment to challenging the work of our students. At the end, we have the questions for you so that you can easily answer them.
And so we know we're getting to our time limit, and so just let me quickly ask the question of you guys in general. How many of our current teachers, looking at, I should say, last year's teachers, how many of them have taught for less than three years? And we refer to those teachers as freshman teachers. We want to indeed support for those teachers that are new, that are freshman teachers. And we have seen over time that the biggest need is for them to have some help with classroom management. So we are asking you guys to look at the classroom management and indeed see if you have provided them enough of that over the last couple of years. And if so, what type of classroom management was provided? Who provided that professional development? And we would like to know how many of our new freshman teachers actually receive that professional development last school year or in, or the prior two years to that. And then we also would like to know if our district has clearly articulated school site discipline processes that all of these teachers are made aware of. And then lastly, if they have received professional development in the area of classroom management, how many hours of that professional development did they actually receive? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much to all of you for coming. If you have further questions that you would like to send us, please send it to us by email and we'll follow up. Okay, board, now we're moving to agenda review and adoption. If there are no objections, the agenda is approved, is adopted. Okay, I don't see any objections, so it's adopted. Now we can move to consent items. Or are there any consent items? Anyone like to pull? Just trustee Reckler.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to pull C additional courses earning physical education credit.
Thank you. I don't see any more hands, so if there are no objections, we'll approve the rest of the consent calendar. So adopted, thank you. Minus C eight, excuse me. Okay, Dr. Hurst, now we're moving to the sprinting communication. Pass it to you.
Thank you. Can we pull up the presentation, please, on the agenda? I can pull it up as well, if that's easier. I have it. First, we'd like to take the opportunity to recognize the contributions of members of our school community who have passed away. I regret to inform everyone that our Dover elementary teacher, Anthony Fresquez, has passed. Anthony Fresquez has been a teacher, a friend, a colleague, and an institution at Dover Elementary School for the past fifteen years. Anthony was a deeply loving person who were blessed by his deep dedication to his students, to families, and to the community. Anthony worked hard to make sure his students received nothing but the best from him as their teacher. And the same effort and care he gave to his students, he gifted to his friends, colleagues, and staff. He was a true and loyal friend, and he will be missed beyond what words can express. Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. We have a couple of items we wanted to bring to the board. We've been talking, myself and our new CAO, Ms. Neely Johnson, about the implementation of a literacy research team or a literacy task force. And in our conversation and our discussion, what we shared is we've been presented with a lot of information about Mississippi and other southern states and what's been happening in those states. And we've had a conversation around multiple data measures during the summer. And what we shared is that we really want to look at that research and all of the research. So the purpose of developing a literacy task force or a literacy research team is to build a knowledge base for all of our staff regarding best literacy practices. So really fundamentally, we'll be looking at a number of pieces of research on literacy and what are the best practices. The goal is to develop a comprehensive literacy plan for implementation for the upcoming, the next school year, twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We have, myself and Ms. Neely Johnson have discussed this in detail. The team will be meeting weekly. They'll be reviewing research, books, data, and literature. We also talked about this concept of, not everyone can be part of the team, but we wanted to make sure that everyone who wanted to have access to the literature that they'll be reading has access to the literature so they can follow along on the research. And really, the purpose of this literacy research team or task force is to summarize these research findings and then to come to the board and to present those findings on a regular basis. But also, we want to present those findings via social media and other communication outlets. CAO Neely Johnson has opted to appoint Ms. Allison Macula as the task force lead. In talking with Ms. Macula and Ms. Neely Johnson, they don't want it to get too large, so they're thinking right now that it will be from eight to twelve people part of this team. Some people have already reached out to Ms. Neely Johnson, myself, and Ms. Macula. But of course, we want to keep in mind the board members and have two board members appointed. We wanted to look at our teachers classified, our students, our community members, and anyone else we had not thought about. We wanted to consider that. So we wanted to just make sure that we made it comprehensive, but we didn't want it to get too big. And in the same vein, we also are putting together a strategic planning and LCAP task force. And we opted to combine these two because those processes are very similar as far as engagement and then having goals at the very end of those processes. So one of the things we're going to do is look at what is the process we're going to use, and we're going to look at coming up with a timeline and also the product. So what is the deliverable at the end of this year? So we are appointing Ms. Liz Sanders as a task force lead. But this is a big process, so there will be a number of community engagements as part of this. And in fact, the team that's put together, they'll be bringing back to the board what this process is going to look like, because I know that has been a big conversation and a sticking point around making sure we do authentic stakeholder engagement for LCAP, but also for strategic planning. So Ms. Sanders will be leading that task force superintendent. There'll be a board member appointed to the task force. And again, we have this divided up in teams, so for the planning and engagement team, really looking at Ms. Sanders, superintendent, a board member, and then three other members. But again, this will be a community stakeholder process, but this is just a planning team. But then there's implementation team, so we know that everything will come back to my executive cabinet as well. And then also, there's a communication team. And we have, of course, we know Director of Communication, Ms. Sanders. Ms. Morgan Matthews is going to play a big role. She's the Director of Research and Reporting. And then we have staff as well from Communications and also staff from Research and Reporting that will participate in that sort of logistical team or communication team. But I just wanted to make very clear, there'll be community-wide stakeholder engagement. This is just the planning team. And we really want to bring this back to the board so that we make sure that the board approves, uh, the process moving forward because we know that's been a big conversation, uh, piece. So that's what we wanted to share with you today. Two really big task forces being created. The literacy research team or task force, and then also the strategic planning and L cap staff, uh, task force. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Board, we'll move to questions for tonight on, um, this item and our action items. We'll do three. If we have more, we can do a second round. Uh, we'll start with trustee Phillips.
Thank you, President Gonzalez Hoi. Dr. Hurst, I'm very, um, I'm happy to hear about the literacy task force and the looking at the, uh, other districts uh, around the country. My question is, um, the findings that come out um, periodically, because it sounds like they're going to come out over time. I know you don't know what the findings are yet, but what are you going to do with the findings other than report them?
So one of the things, uh, we shared is one, we want to come to the board on a regular basis. I'll have to talk with, um, the board president on what he believes is reasonable. Our feedback was that we come back every month, monthly, and just share what the literature says. So that's the first thing. And really, we want to build consensus, um, uh, and really seek direction from the board. So if we're saying here's what the best research says that we should be implementing as far as best practices curriculum, we want to report that out to the board. And I'll just say, we're still kind of thinking through this and we do seek direction from all of you as well. But I think it's really to build consensus. We're a unified district. We wanted to go be able to go into the new school year in a unified manner, uh, implementing the appropriate curriculum and best strategies.
Thank you. Um, in your presentation, you also highlighted this strategic planning slash L cap task force and how those two things work together or can work together. Um, but it seems like the literacy task force and the findings like that that should be part of the strategic planning. So can you talk about how those two things go together, if at all?
Well, they do go together and, uh, we have started initial conversations about just the, the point that you brought up. So if we're saying that literacy is certainly a focus, I mean, that would be a goal. And as you know, right now, we have six organizational goals. The first organizational goal is around literacy. So if that's the conversation, then we know that the L cap has to be part of that because at the very end of that process, we're going to have goals, right? And build consensus around that. As we think about the strategic planning process, the same thing is going to happen, uh, that upcoming end of this year, there'll be a set of goals. So they have to play together in conjunction with one another. And we do have to look at literacy. And if we're saying and the board has said clearly that that is a priority for them, then that needs to be part of the conversation. When we think about the, the data, it's natural. You look at, uh, our E L A data and our reading data. That has to be a party. It is a priority. So it has to be embedded in the conversation for strategic planning and the L cap.
Thank you. And for my last question, when you and or your team present the findings from the literacy task force, are you just going to be presenting in the sense of, hey, we did the research. This is what we saw? Or is it going to be, we did the research and this is my recommendation as the superintendent?
I think it's going to be both, sir. So just to explain, I think, um, that task force will come to us and share, here's what we're learning, here's what we saw. And then I think there's going to be a point. And we are still working on the timeline, but we have said, I think Ms. Neely Johnson said January timeframe, that we want to be able to come to the board with a recommendation, looking at all of the research.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds.
Dr. Harris, are there principles here in those task force, the strategic planning, L cap task force, and the literacy task force? Do we have principles listed?
I'm glad you said that. That's why I said others. So there may have been some group that we we left out. So thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you very much. President Gonzalez Hoi, I just have comments.
Thank you. Um, okay, why don't we move to we usually don't do comments for the report. Uh, am I getting that wrong? Uh, we usually just do questions. Um, okay, well, we have a, can you leave your comments for the end of the night? Awesome. Thank you. Um, anyone else have questions? Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Hurst. Now we're going to move to our action items. The first one, uh, resolution number two, three, two, four, dash, one, four, declaration of need for fully qualified educators. I believe, Dr. Johnson, this is your item.
Yes, hello, board. Um, this is a continued partnership that we have for educational specialists, counseling, and teacher interns, and it's just continuing that partnership.
Thank you so much. Do we have any public comment on this item?
There's no public comment.
Thank you. Board, are there any questions? Okay, can I please have a motion on this item?
I move resolution, sorry. I move resolution number two, three, two, four, dash, fourteen, declaration of need for fully qualified educators approval.
Reckless will second.
Thank you. Board, are there any comments? Okay, let's move to a vote. Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Christian, yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Phillips? And I'm a yes as well. Thank you so much. Pass unanimously. Our next item is, uh, action item E two provisional internship permits. Uh, Dr. Johnson, I believe is also your item.
Yes, thank you again. Um, this is a provisional internship permit, um, permit. And it is for to allow employee agencies, the school district, to hire an individual who has not yet met the subject matter competence. And it's requi- it's a requirement needed to enter into an internship program.
Thank you. Are there any public comment on this item?
There's no public comment.
Thank you. Board, is there anyone with questions? Okay, can I have a motion on this item?
I move the provisional internship permit approval.
Reckless will second.
Thank you. Are there any comments? Clerk Smith Folds, go ahead. And then, um, we have three minutes per item. Would you mind putting up the clock, Ms. Logan? Sorry, this is one minute. I s- I s- for three minutes. I saw one for three twenty-four, which is close enough. Oh, awesome. Thank you. Go ahead, Clerk Smith Folds. Sorry about that.
Thank you so much. I know that this is a necessary step that we have to do, but I would like us not to have to utilize this all the time. We need to make sure that we have credentialed qualified teachers in the classroom in all of our classrooms. I know that, um, what we're doing is giving enough time and space for everyone to finish their programs and do everything that they need to do, but there's something about going through a credentialing program that it just has to be valued and has to be understood because teaching is a skill. It's it's a skill and people need to figure out if they can do it or not do it with the resource and supports that they have around them. I just don't want this overused. I just need to make sure that that's vocalized and said, and I would love to have a a, an exit plan, Dr. Hurst. How do we make sure that we are having a road to fully credentialed teachers in the classroom? I'm complete.
Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds. Anyone else have comments? Okay, thank you. Uh, let's move to our vote. Clerk Smith Folds, start with you.
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Christian, yes.
Trustee Reckler, step away for a minute. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Passes for yes one, um, absent. Thank you. Um, okay, next item is E three, which is variable term waivers. Dr. Johnson, I believe it is also your item.
Yes, thank you again. So this waiver is to, again, allow additional time to complete the requirements for the cred- credential that authorizes a service for, again, our agencies to fill, um, vacancies and assignments.
Thank you. For, uh, sorry. Is there any public comment?
There's no public comment.
Thank you. Board, are there any questions? Okay, can I please have a motion on this item?
I move, I move educational code four, four, two, five, eight, dot, three, variable term waivers approval.
Thank you. Or are there any comments on this item? Okay, let's move to a vote.
Did I get a second, sir?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I didn't even catch that. Thank you. Um, I will second your, your motion. I appreciate that. Okay, uh, trustee Reckler, we are on E three. Uh, okay, we'll start the vote. Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Christian, yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckless, yes.
You, trustee Phillips? Thank you, and I'm a yes as well. Pass unanimously. And our last action item is the ratification of the tentative agreement around compensation for our W C C A A union. Dr. Tenessa Check, is this your item?
Thank you, President Gonzalez Hoi, Clerk Smith Fold, trustees, and Superintendent Hurst. Ms. Denise Steen, on behalf of W C C A A, and myself are here jointly to present to the board and to Dr. Hurst, West Contra Costa and Administrators Union and W C C U S D joint T A in interest-based bargaining that we achieved. Ms. Steen will go over the specifics associated with the T A and compensation. I wanted to advise that this has been vetted through the county and approved by Ms. Javetta Cleveland. And so we are here to provide the specifics and jointly ask for the board to ratify the T A to be effective July one, twenty twenty-three. With that, I will turn it over to Ms. Steen to talk about the specifics.
Thank you, Conrad. Good evening. Uh, President Gonzalez Hoi, Board, and Dr. Hurst. Uh, I want to highlight the work that has been done through the interest-based bargaining. First, let me tell you that our, uh, admin negotiation team and the district representatives went through three full days of training on the, uh, this bargaining method. The training helped us to understand the interest-based versus traditional or positional bargaining. And the outcome of the I B B is so much more positive. And it's a best approach to building a contract that everyone can agree upon. Having said that, we put compensation at the top of our priority list. One thing we were both interested or all interested in was streamlining our steps in order to hire and retain quality administrators. We squared our steps for parity from year one through year five. In past years, steps were uneven. We have squared these steps, one to five, to five percent. In addition, we've also negotiated a six percent increase for the next school year. Again, sending a message to our members that they are valued and that their service uh, is important and that we want them to invest and we want to invest in their future and their careers. This T A is the first and best step in negotiating a, uh, full collaborative contract between U S uh, W C C U S D and the Administrators Association. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steen. In addition to that, all the respective appendices are attached to the agenda item, including the A B twelve hundred, uh, the T A language itself that was signed off by both parties. Accordingly, again, we respectfully request jointly that the board ratify this in accordance, um, with the information provided. The total estimated cost is one million and ninety dollars and nine hundred and thirty-eight. Um, in addition to that, uh, those funds have been set aside already for, um, inclusion in, um, the A B twelve hundred that has been ratified prior to with the board. Uh, further financial questions associated with that can be addressed with Ms. Moses. So again, respectfully, we request that the board ratify this particular T A. The parties are continuing diligently to work together in addressing all the outstanding items for a successor agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for you both for being here. Um, do we have any public comment on this item?
We have one public comment, Ms. Denise Steen.
That was actually for before.
Oh.
That's okay.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, board, um, who, does anyone have questions? Okay, then let's move to a motion.
I move to ratify tentative agreement compensation with W C C A A.
Okay, I'll second that. Board, do we have any comments? Trustee Phillips? If we could put up the three minutes up, please. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We've had several tentative agreements come, uh, before the board uh, recently, and I personally have declined to vote uh, in favor of those agreements because, and I've said this before, uh, I think that the board, uh, went too far uh, in the U T R agreement, um, and essentially uh, as a result, ended up approving more than double the amount of money that we received, uh, via the cost of living adjustment from the state. So I didn't think it was something that we could afford. Uh, I didn't begrudge anyone because I do think that, uh, people not only want the money, but uh, need the money for reasons that I don't really need to repeat uh, right now, other than this is a very expensive time, uh, and place to live, uh, in. Um, but in looking at this tentative agreement, I, I think tonight I'm actually going to vote differently. Uh, and the reason why is there are a few reasons. One, um, the money has been set aside already. In addition to that, um, I'm really thankful that you all are doing interest-based bargaining. However, the me too worked out, it worked out because it's a me too, and I understand that process. Um, but I really hope over time that all of our bargaining units move to interest-based bargaining uh, with the district, not to give the district any kind of upper hand, because that's not what the point is. The point is uh, for us all to be moving in the same direction. Uh, not one person or party pulling the other along, but everybody going in the same direction. uh, with the right motivation. And I think you have to do interest-based bargaining to get there. And it's something that I brought up regarding other units in the past, and it just hasn't happened yet, but I hope we get there. But I want to encourage that. And even despite by everything that you've heard me say regarding the TAs that have come before the board recently for the reasons I've just stated, I'm actually going to vote for this tonight, and I really hope that you guys continue to do the collaborative work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments? I just, um, you can start my timer. Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to thank W C C A A and our team. Um, I hope that this shows that even though there was a me-too and all these things, I hope that it shows the board's commitment to our principles and that we value every single one of you for the work that you do. Um, and I just want to say thank you because uh it is not enough. Uh, but I just, I hope that it shows our our acknowledgement for the work that happens. Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna move to a vote. We'll start with Clerk Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian.
Christian, yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna move to our last item, which was uh consent item C eight, which was pulled by trustee Reckler, uh, which additional courses earning physical education credit. Uh, trustee Reckler, I'll pass to you.
Yes, thank you so much. So when I look at the attachment, um, I'm uh, so the reason I pulled it is that usually uh, the new policy is redlined with the addition. And when I look at this policy, I don't see a red line with any new additions. And then even with searching and reading very carefully, I don't see where the addition of uh, J R O T C and marching bands is in the policy or where you intended to go in the policy. Or does it have to be called out directly?
I'll let this, uh, did you want to answer that, Ms. Neely Johnson, about the the policy?
Can you hear me? Okay, so the um, policy states that we can add additional courses. And so these two courses will be added to our course catalog so that students have the ability to use these two courses as the P E requirement.
Does it have to be put directly into the policy? Because it says the overall course of study for grades nine to twelve shall include the effects of physical activity upon dynamic health, the mechanics of body movement, aquatics, gymnastics and tumbling, individual and dual sports, rhythms and dance, team sports and combatives. I don't know about what that is. Um, and so it seems like things are called out, you know, directly. And so I I don't see J R O T C in here nor marching band, or do those fall into mechanics of body movement or other?
We can look into that. Um, and I do think that um, what you're saying, it makes sense to have those specific courses so that they are archived and everyone knows that that those courses are approved.
Okay, thank you. Um, the next question I have is what, is there something specific that constitutes marching band? Do you have to wear a uniform? Do you have to? Um, I mean, like specifically what I'm really thinking about is Elserito has a pep band and not marching band. As far as I could tell, I've never seen them put a foot on the field, so I is there some definition of marching band or?
Yes, yes, there is um a definition. Um, and the um, our band teacher who called in, um, we have a lot of marching bands um in our comprehensive high schools. They go and they perform. They, um, I think he shared about um building up stamina to perform at uh many times the football games, but also in competitions around the state.
Okay, the other question I have is on students that never mind. Okay, never mind. I don't, I don't need to ask that. Okay, so, um, those are my questions. I guess it's just what do we do right now to pass this with the proper language?
Well, the question is there on this fourth sentence, our fourth paragraph of the policy says the board shall approve the courses in grades nine through twelve for which physical education credit may be granted. And I think that's the part that's that goes that as long as we approve these courses, this loss or credit. I guess the question is, are we okay with just approving them to be course credit and not having in the policy? Or to your point, do you want to add it to the policy, which we could do today with an amendment if you wanted to? But it doesn't seem like it's fully necessary. So it's up to the board.
For the number of questions I get about P E, if we could, I think it's better because then you can point and be like, it's right there. I'm not the you know, I don't know for sure, but I I frequently get questions about what's included, what's not, how do I get the waiver, you know, so. Um, uh, maybe, maybe I could try a motion.
Yeah, if if you don't mind, on maybe that paragraph that you read, it could just be in addition to that paragraph. I think that'd be okay.
And to make a motion that we approve the policy and staff goes back and figures out whether this needs need, whether those two categories need to be added, then they figure out where perhaps.
Yeah, I'll second that motion and then go ahead, Clerk Smith Folds.
I think we want to be really clear because we have so many different high schools and they are not aligned with how they offer courses. So Hercules High School, you can take dance in tenth grade and that becomes your P E credit. I don't know what Elserito does. I don't know what Kennedy does. So making sure that we are not creating barriers at other schools and other sites and not adding privileges to one or the other, making sure that we're consistent. And that if our aim is to have marching band, one of our aims, one is to have marching band as P E credit to make sure that we have a working definition of what marching band is, to make sure that it's offered at the schools and then they can take that as P E credit. But that's making sure what is the definition of P E credit at all of our schools? And what does that look like at all of our schools? Again, at Hercules? Oh, at Hercules, all ninth graders have to take P E. So what does that mean, right? What does it look like? What does it mean? But I I'm for this. I think that marching band as a former band student, marching band should be a P E credit. But again, social dance. You know, so should, we should look into social sports. So there's other things that we can talk about. I'm complete.
Trustee Christian?
Yeah, I was just going to say is that all the schools should have a marching band. You know, it, everybody should be consistent or um, I have a band because some schools don't have a ma- a band. So, um, I would say that all the schools should have a band. Uh, I'm through.
Thank you. Um, okay, trustee Phillips. Kind of close us out.
I'm just gonna follow on. If all the schools should have a band, and I'm not against that, we should actually have a real conversation about making sure they all have viable instruments because they don't.
Thank you. I agree. All right, now we're heading into rabbit holes, uh, e- even though I completely agree. Um, okay, so the question in front of us, the motion is that trustee Reckler, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the staff goes back and just clears whether or not the language should be in the policy, but we're we're approving the courses, the changes in the courses so that marching band and R T counts as P E credit. Did I describe that motion correctly?
Yes, exactly. Approving the policy and staff goes back and figures out whether those exact terms need to be in here like all of these other little categories that they have.
Yep, okay, thank you. Um, then we'll move to the vote. Clerk Smith Folds, start with you.
Um, did you second, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Again, uh, Smith Folds, yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian.
Christian, yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm a, I'm a yes as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you, uh, C E O Johnson. Um, okay, now we're gonna move to comments from the board. If we could put up our clock up, please. And then who would like to get it started? Anyone love to volunteer? Or does no one have comments? No, trustee Phillips, thank you.
Summer is almost over. Um, I know calendar-wise, it's not almost over, but uh, the summer where we, some of us, at least the kids, I'm not off. Um, that summer is almost over, so I just hope everyone uh, has been safe uh and has had a good summer. Uh, and that people uh are starting to shift and, you know, I know our staff is and I appreciate that. Uh, but for parents and uh children, i- it's almost here. So uh, I know that uh people say this every year, but I I do wish very much uh, that this is the best year uh that we have collectively um and individually as well. Uh, there is a a long runway. There's a lot uh to be done uh here, and there's a lot of opportunity uh to do good. So wherever you are right now, uh, whatever your situation is right now, um, please, whether you are a student, a parent, staff, uh, or administrator, uh, the space that you occupy, um, please know that it's important, please know that it's needed, uh, and please do your best uh, in whatever space that you are in, uh, because this truly uh requires everybody rowing. Uh, and it's very similar to the comment that I made uh, during the tentative agreement for the Administrators Association. It it involves everybody rowing in the same direction and willingly. Um, that willingly uh is very important. It all, it doesn't always happen. Uh, but I think when it does, um, that's when you really uh make the progress that uh, that you want to make. So again, I look forward to seeing everyone uh returning to school safely. Uh, and I hope that you all have had a very good summer. That's it.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Anyone else have comments? Clerk Smith Folds, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, everyone. Um, Dr. Hurst, when we are talking about the literacy task force and the strategic planning, we need to make sure that we include preschool all the way to adult ed. We have a huge gamut that we cover of ed or those that we educate. So when we're talking about literacy, literacy goes from cradle to grave. So we want to make sure that we are um intentional about who we're putting on these uh task force and why. Um, I do want to say that if you did not have the pleasure of knowing Mr. Anthony, I've visited his classroom. He was absolutely marvelous. He was an excellent, excellent teacher in W C C U S D, and he will be highly missed. His wife is absolutely amazing too, and she is such an addition, and she's gonna need our support. She works for the district also. She's gonna need our support and our love as she goes through this very, very hard time. Um, I also want to talk about, I'm glad that we adopted the new ability for credit, P E credit for our marching band and for our O T C. I do want to mention that athletes really do a lot of hard work outside of a P E class. They do that and P E at the same time. That may be part of the policy, but if not, I would like to have a conversation about that. With school starting, um, parents, guardians, please join your A P A Cs, your E likes, your S S Cs, your P T As, your P T Os. Welcome to all of our new principals and teachers. Uh, W C C U S D is a unique place to work. Um, parents, um, the if, for the babies, this is your first time taking your baby to school. Thank you for trusting us. We would do our very best. Please teach your child how to zip, button and tie. If you are a brand new kid coming to the school because teachers do not have time to do that. When you go out shopping for your student, please shop also if you can for your teacher, dry erase markers, copy paper, paper towels, sanitizer, ask them what they need. They will let you know. Teachers do not need mugs. Stop giving them mugs. They need gift cards. Make sure that you are offering gift cards, not T-shirts or mugs, and flowers die. So we need, they need uh money. Uh, thank you so much, President Gonzalez Hoi, for getting us out on in record time, which is amazing. And I am complete. Welcome to the new school year, everyone. Let's have a great one.
Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds. Trustee Christian, go ahead.
Yes, I want to say, uh, welcome to all the new prin- principals who are coming into uh our district and as well as our new te- teachers and classified staff. Um, as we move into to the opening up the schools, I believe with the fifteenth, and we'll be going in and ready to go. Our students will be back and we want to encourage our students and and uh give them a a action plan on uh the the direction where how they can achieve their goals uh in the classroom and how they can be successful in achieving uh their education. So my uh uh, this for this school year, you know, we we got to keep moving even through the challenges. We were, we've been through a lot of challenges already. Um, but uh we got to, you know, keep moving. If if you stop and then you lose momentum. So we got to keep the momentum going and um we have uh new staff uh in in the uh, in, all the way around. And I just want to say to everybody, let's work and be be together and stop cutting each other up. Uh, but uh work together and resolve your issues and have a good school year. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Christian. For my comments, um, yes, I can't believe it's already August. Wow, this summer. I mean, every summer goes fast, but this summer, I feel like it went especially quick. Um, I want to thank everybody who worked summer school, our thing, our cabinet, our sprint, and then I know that everybody needed a break and the people who continue to working. I just want to thank you. Um, I want to welcome Doctor Johnson. Perfect timing. I wanted to welcome you. It's your first board meeting in West Contra Costa. Thank you for for being here. Really do appreciate you choosing West County, just like our new principals and everybody who's joining West County. Um, I know that the work already started. I heard the the management meeting for the last two days. That's gone really well. I want to know what my hundred Tracy Bucks are going to buy me, uh, because I got this today. Uh, I'm gonna go to I T and see what I can buy. Uh, so thank you for that. Um, and I want to just echo what my colleagues have said. I just want to wish you all a good year. Um, and just remind us that we're gonna have some very difficult conversations, but um, and I ask our community for patience because our schools and community always have needs, many needs. Um, and with our deficit, with everything we're gonna go through this year, um, I ask that you hold us accountable, but I also ask that you hold some patience for us and for our district as we go through those two difficult conversations. Um, Anthony, we're gonna miss you. Dr. Hurst, I do think that if we can send some support to Dover at the beginning of the school year, I'd appreciate it. You know, that school has lost two teachers in two years. Uh, so they've gone through some difficult times. Um, and colleagues, thank you again for another great meeting, and I wish us all a great school year. Okay, community, our next school board meeting is on August twenty-third here at Levania de Jean. I adjourn us at seven forty-five. Thank you.